It is seven o'clock. So unfortunately, we don't have a forum tonight. We are a person shy of having a forum, so we can't have the informational meeting. We can't go over minutes. We can't vote on anything. But we can still meet. So if that's still your wish while we're here, then we can go ahead and do that. We'll be skipping, you know, several things, but. I can just like sit right here.
Without the other, well, at least two of the other three, the discussion's kind of one sided. And I'd kind of like to hear the other, other views on some of these items. So I don't really know at this point, not much use of having the meeting.
Okay, um, I'll tell you what, I have. I have asked two people to be here tonight, and I, I don't want to.
Point their toe.
Turn them away.
Okay.
So. Do we need to call to order?
You basically have.
Okay. Okay, so the people present are myself and David Dolner and David Thomas. And unfortunately, we don't have, have a forum tonight, so. Matt, is there anything that you wanted, or we're not going to be able to have an official meeting tonight? Is there any of this that you, if you brought the information that you wanted to discuss?
The new ambulances would be the only thing really pertinent. The paperwork will pass out, but the top page is supposed to be original for the ambulance. Which at the last meeting I talked about, we went back and forth over changing chassis from Ford to Dodge. And decided to go back to Dodge. And somehow the manufacturer, when they, when our rebels ended up did that, they kicked our order out. So the truck's not on board anymore. So they are producing a demo truck, which is very similar to what. What we were getting, just a few different modifications inside are going to be different as what our custom inside that we were looking at. You see the price difference? To. Around $100, just a negative number. But they are going to pay for the install of our striker system, our auto loader, which that quote is on my back page. So you can knock 1,680 off that price. And they're also going to pay for the painting of the ambulance, which was $6,000. So you can take $7,680 off of the difference of getting close to being the same price, basically. With them covering those costs.
Okay, and this, this is the one that was going to come kind of close to, close to now, that's, this is.
Yes, it's the same page, it'll be the one again, it'll be a Ford F-450, four wheel drive. It's basically, it's the same chassis we were getting. That was a Dodge, it's going to be a 4500, so it's going to be the same size chassis. Everything will be the same, basically, with the chassis. A box will have a few different things than. Something that's a demo that we didn't specifically order.
So is that what you're going to get more or less than what you would need to do compared to the other ambulances?
It would be personally the same of the one we ordered of the, of this front page.
You were saying the demos got some other things you would have ordered, is that?
Oh, it won't pass some things that we had, like cabinet wise, little things like that, nothing specific. Really makes a huge difference in operations. It's just, we had ordered specific little things that it's not going to have, like some of the lights will be a little bit different inside. Cabinets will be arranged a little bit different than what we had specified. There's nothing that we can't work around.
Remind me again, what was the reasoning from changing from the Dodge to the Ford? Is it just a better chassis?
If I close that letter, if you look at the letter that the vendor sent, and this was kind of the same issue we had at the time. Dodge had quit producing chassis. So it was, it was producing a delay in our trucks, so we'd looked at going to Ford. Ford was more extensive, so we, and then Dodge started producing more chassis, so he said, don't worry about it. Dodge is back producing, well, now they're not back producing, so it's back and forth with, with Dodge and Ford and everybody. It's not a vendor thing, it's the manufacturer of the chassis, so they're just not producing. Or they're producing for general public, but not for like industry stuff. Late July or to mid-August was the time for it that he gave me. So a couple of months, if we.
This was already paid on?
The bathroom door, so he'll have to give you the exact numbers on what the difference in the price will be, because there may still be a little difference. So we'll work those items out with him here in the near future.
Just to clarify, it hasn't been paid for, but we have encumbered the money for it, yes.
I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to be something that would be added for the next year's budget. Because it's, you know, we've had to wait so long to actually write the check off.
No, money's been held, and it's coming out of our funding.
Yeah, a lot of this other stuff.
Well, while we're talking about ambulances, I would like to get a little update on the painting of the other ambulances.
Whenever we want to do it, he's, he likes to do it when it's a little bit warmer outside.
Yeah.
So probably next month, we can, we can do that, it'll be the $6,000 for that one, so it's. So we.
On the local doing that, or is that a company?
Yes, sir, it's, his estimate's in here, it's got his name on it.
Oh, sir.
Should be that.
Okay.
Sorry to bring the whole bottom total off, but.
I didn't think it was 600.
Yeah, it's got the full price somewhere in the middle of it, so.
Your new supply chain system's going great?
Oh, we haven't purchased.
Yeah, but for just, okay. Remind me, and I put this on here because I knew it was touched on, that emergency shelter that was discussed. Is that something that will go forward, or we?
Oh, we're waiting on the planners from Tama to come down, take a look at it, that'll be here later this month.
There was a discussion in executive on that. Which building is it that you wanted to put it in the bottom of?
The sheriff wanted to do it in.
In the old city hall building.
Correct, yes, sir, downstairs.
That's what we thought, and everyone was debating whether there was even a basement to that.
Yeah, it's cool, completely underneath, it's wide open. So they've already cleaned a lot of it out, fixed the bathrooms and stuff. So it's, can be used kind of ad hoc, the doors and stuff are kind of not, rough, it's just a sliding barn door.
Well, there's no exterior entrance to that, right? It's just.
Just the garage doors on the back.
So there's a lot of discussion.
Fall under AHA issues, I mean ADA issues, because.
Well, we'll turn it into a barn door.
They can't, trying to get down there to it, because sometimes that gate, the main gate's usually locked. And there's a stairwell that the majority of people use, so it's a, figured that part out. But the planner will be here next month, so we're going to bring him by. We got our hazard mitigation plan is, is due to be revised this year, so that's going to be part of it, hopefully.
Harship waiter for can't really. And you guys are, or have begun your. Your training for your, for your stipend, so I know you guys are good.
Yes.
Okay, what about me?
The mayor and Cliff came by today, looked at things, Oscar's going to come by. I don't know if he came by today or not, I was, had to take a couple of calls, because our handlers were busy anywhere up here at the luncheons. I'm not sure if he stopped by today or not.
Do, Oscar? I don't know if he did or not, we, I think, I think Matt and I need to sit down and come up with maybe a three-phase way to do it. For us, we've got some money, we need to spend some money up there.
Yeah.
So we'll, we'll get with Oscar and talk, and Cliff's going to talk to Oscar about initially three or four things that need to be done pretty quickly. And so we'll move in that direction.
Super, okay. You good? You got, you got anything else?
No.
Okay. Okay, fire is next. Do you have anything that you want to present?
The update on the brush truck that is at Blanket Hills 12 that was wrecked. Seth received the frame we were awaiting last Friday. So we will begin to schedule his work on the truck. The paint. And once you get the frame setting under it, then you'll know how much of the suspension might need to be changed out. I asked you if we still thought his quote was on target, and he said yes. We ordered turnout gear 12 sets December 7th. I got word that on April 19th, they will ship from the manufacturer. So that turnout gear should be arriving within a matter of days now. The new brush truck that we had ordered, the last thing they were waiting on was the pump that goes on the back. To power the water streams. Those had been on back order. They had expected the pump to be delivered the first week of April. I have not yet got confirmation whether that's happened or not. But that was the last piece of that puzzle. So very likely, we'll receive the new truck before we get brush 12 back in service.
So Mark, did I hear you correctly, we're getting a, a new chassis for that one? Not repairing the old chassis?
Well, a new frame, yes, yes. He had put that into his quote for repairs, and that's what it had been on back order for so long was the 450 frames.
Well, it should be a better repair anyway.
Well, and he hopes it, it will proceed a little smoother and faster by simply dropping a frame. Hundredth anniversary for the fire department is April 16th. Mayor and I had worked out timing of five to seven at the fire station. Best records we have indicate that the Old Town Parts will purchase its first fire truck on April 16th, 1924. So we suspect it had been in operation a little bit longer than that, but no records exist to verify it. So we're going to capture the April 16th, 1924 date and go forward with that. So we will have a celebration in a few days. We have identified all of the former chiefs, and a plaque is being developed right now. That will go with, be unveiled at the fire station during the celebration. That lists the former chiefs and the years of their service. We contacted Farrell Hale for a Senate resolution honoring the fire department. And he has come through and his office got that delivered to us today. So I think the bits and pieces, Mayor, if you want to throw in anything here, your parent.
We're getting some photographs that we need to, to use on social media. That has been alerted, I think they're going to write a big follow-up article. I know John Oliver's going to include it in his articles this week, and so we'll be getting a lot of information out to social media.
And, and a thanks to John and Cassie Hassler. With the archives for their efforts to help us verify dates of service for these former chiefs. And nail down their years with some, some accuracy. So they did a good job, of course. That's all I've got.
Okay. All right, rescue?
Inspection there under fire, the burn permit blasting. So we just started codes and zoning discussing the burn permit. Once we have something that is near finished, we can bring that over and share that with this committee and kind of go over it. Any input would be greatly appreciated as we're going forward with that. The blasting permit, that was already adopted by the planning commission, and Rosalie has already, has that up on the website. We'll be bringing this commission meeting of April, we're going to be bringing that forward from codes and zoning. To put a hundred dollar fee associated to it, to help with any administrative cost. When we added that permit to the software, there was a charge for that, and then this should cover that charge for it being on there. So we'll see what the commission does with that, but the permit itself is already in place. And Jones Brothers were the first ones to, to fill it out for the new construction on 141. And then, of course, Enbridge, they'll, they'll be doing theirs when they come through with the pipeline. And really, it actually will benefit the county as a whole, because we didn't have anything in, in place to notify the public. I had talked with Waylon, and he said he, he loved the idea, because now if something happens, they know where to go. You know, they'll have, the permit will have all that contact information. It'll also let the fire chief, and Matt, you should be contacted on any of that also. So that if something were going on, you'll know when and maybe have to plan some staffing in case something were to happen, depending on how much blasting they're doing. But for even basements, swimming pools, that sort of thing, smaller projects that they decide to blow some rock, well, they'll have to get a permit for it. They'll have some benefits there, just for communication purposes, if nothing else.
Thank you. All right, Timmy, Timmy. Timmy, Timmy. Do you have, what, any part of yours that you wanted to discuss, since we don't have the pool?
Main one is the, all the things that were up to date, except the boat. Only the batteries. Somewhat I missed coming, so we'll be asking, there's no batteries for the boat. Bathroom's been fixed, building's been fixed, except for the lighting, the walls.
And Cliff did get the, the pictures? Cliff did get those?
Coming up, extrication next weekend. So I got to get a record, so we asked him what's money for that.
Okay.
We got to make all that.
Now, he says, okay. Okay. I know that Kirk has said something about, yeah, having a hallway vehicle, and there was one training that. That they were talking about, they didn't know if they had an instructor for.
That's great, we have an instructor. We've got extrication, it's great.
Yeah, that's why I put the, the training and instructors on there, just in. We need to, to find one for you.
We got to be powered and wired.
I am.
We've got the children's spares, there's still an extrication.
Oh, gee. Okay.
Just got to have some money to buy batteries. We got some batteries, which he says we can use. Other than that, everything else is good.
Okay, so. Since that clock rang. Okay. So I did call some, some people up here to talk to you guys. Informative only, so, and since they are here, then I wanted to give them the opportunity to show the information that, that they have. Because I didn't have all the information, and I think us as a EMS committee, I think it was great knowledge for us to have. Whether or not it happens, doesn't happen, we're still an emergency services committee, and I think it's, it's good for us to, to know. So I went ahead and whichever one of you guys wants to. Come up here first, I think everybody in here should know Mr. Hyatt.
Most of the departments here knows me, has either had a class I've taught, or Chief Baylor knows me through my father, which is Chief Hyatt of Purge. I'm in my full-time job before my talk classes down there today, so y'all apologize. I was asked to come down by Mr. Cross there, Amber had contacted them, about the education incentive paper program that the state came out with. Being paid firefighter, I've gotten for years in Wilson County. We started in 2021, getting into the Purge, we've gotten for the last three years of Purge. We had, just looked, not nothing, y'all heard me, but y'all did a long day. Fifteen of our 23 firefighters got it in 2021, if you're paid like I was, I wasn't eligible. We have, we had at that time three that were not eligible, so 15 out of 18 firefighters got them. The next year 12, and then the last year, last year we had 10. So as you can see, $600, they go straight to the firefighters, they don't go to the city or the town, the county, it goes straight to the firefighters, they have it checked in the mail. There were requirements that were made. One of the biggest things is I gave Amber the TCA code that was handed out to all of us whenever we started this program. It comes off the commission's website, anyone's available, go look at it. One of the big things the TCA code specifies is somebody has to be over it, basically, paperwork. The paperwork seems like it's very, very difficult, it's not. I'm more than happy to share with anybody that wants to do this and wants to get started with this, years worth of programs, because they were shared with me. All you have to do is go in and change it if you have somebody that is credentialed as a Tennessee Fire Commission Instructor One. That is the requirement to have, to have somebody oversee the program. An instructor for the department, or someone basically to keep up the paperwork. Now, once somebody's in charge of paperwork, you don't even have to have anybody to do, to teach the classes in-house. You can contact the academy, and they have free classes available for them to come in and teach. But it has to be submitted before the year. There are certain requirements that they require. So the requirements for the education incentive program volunteers is 30 years' worth of verifiable training for participant and an active CPR party. And they have to be submitted the previous year by October 1st. So by October 1st, you have to submit, this is the training I have, with at least 30 hours. For, I gave you the paperwork, it shows how many hours, I think, one year I submitted like 68-hour class. As long as it's at least 30, they don't care. And I got, I got a message one, one year, I submitted like, I submitted 30 or 40 hour online training my firefighters could do. And the purpose is, they can't do it all online, they can do half of it. But they gave them options, they didn't have to do it all, they don't have to sit there and listen to me teach all day. But they can do half of it online and come do the rest of the half in-house. They don't want to do that, they can go take a class at the academy, they can take a weekend class, I can use it as a substitution. They get credentialed as hazmat awareness, hazmat operations, firefighter one, firefighter two, driver operator. That takes care of the entire. Commission certification, they don't even have to worry about having the hours, because that takes care of it for the year. The hours required with the 30 hours per year otherwise. Every year, you're required to have at least four hours of any of these trains, and this is kind of, they don't really judge. Hazmat, stress management, SIDS, or domestic violence. You have to have that every year, one of those four classes, you may say, rotate. Most of the time, I'll rotate between hazmats, SIDS, and domestic violence, I don't normally get the stress management all that well. And, and Amber's got it, if you would have a look at it, there is, I just gave her the entire thing that I had for 2023. Was that what I handed you? Everything I turned in last year? Everything I turned in last year to the state, now everything's digital, that's the paperwork. So if y'all can look over it, you're more than welcome to ask me questions. What we were given when we started this in 2021 was within three years, which this would be the third year. After the third year, participants had to have. The 60-hour initial training, which everyone here does, they had to have, they had to have the control of fire and emergency services. They had to have basic, which is the 64-hour class, and they had to have live fire, which is the library at the academy. Or live fire with a certified live, with fire commission instructors. You had to have that within 36 months, starting, which we finished the 36 months. Within five years, which is the 60 months, so you've got two more years, you've got those already done. You have to have firefighter one. That is always subject to change, everybody knows how the state changes things. I've not heard any different on that. That was still the last thing I had, and like I said, that was the last information I got, and that's what I'm going to be starting. I'm still operating on the same assumption. It seems like it's a lot, I get aggravated every time I submit it, but once you get it started, it's not all that hard. And like I said, I've got years worth. Training position, Chief Cooper, I went to her when I got ready to start, she's like, hey, I want to start this in Purge. What can you give me? She's like, how many years do you want? I had her a four-wheel drive, and she gave me 10 years' worth of already approved commission stuff. I got three or four years from Cook. So I got, everybody around was willing to share, I'm willing to share, I'm willing to help continue, I don't care, most everyone down here knows me. Chief, I know you're not real big on computers, my father ain't either, he literally told me, do it. If it gets our guys' money, do it. I gave you all the numbers for the people that did it and what they got, so even last year, you can think about it, I got our department member $6,000 extra dollars. I'm not eligible, being a paid firefighter, I'm not, I don't get it, I. But I get my members' extra money, so.
All of this has to be submitted within, like, a previous?
So for this year's training, I had to submit all of my, like, for that one right there that you got. It had to be submitted by October 1st, the previous year. And then everything has to be submitted before March 1st, March 3rd. Always have to look it up. If everything, once you're completed, it has to be submitted by, I'm pretty sure it's March 1st of the next year, all the completed training. It all goes into the computer. That, types it all in, submitted, it's in the case, you type it all in, you submit it. Whenever you get ready to be completed, you scan all the paperwork, the state's got their paperwork, you scan the rosters, you scan them, you submit it, once it's completed. Normally, they'll get the checks out May, June, after they approve it, so.
I know somebody had mentioned that they thought that it was only for new firefighters.
The volunteers, now, now for paid firefighters it is. Paid firefighters, for the first two years, it doesn't matter, you get it automatically. After that, you're required to have firefighter one, and then firefighter two. Volunteers, they waived that, that was the reason for the, and three years, you had to have basic live, and then in five years, you had to have firefighter. And that's when they started. Again, I will ask, because this was dropped on me yesterday, Josh called me yesterday and asked about this. I will contact the state and find more out about this, if y'all want to know more, or if they do, and I would like to know one, because I have several members on my department that are wanting to know. For those of you that are not, don't know, YODF hazmat awareness, hazmat operations, before you get tested for firefighter one, commission certification, now, that's all the paperwork that's in. You don't have to use the state, the fire academy, to take those classes. I am still fighting with the lead of the fire academy, the fact that we don't have a hand on force for hazmat awareness operation. Hazmat ops and awareness from the state is. $400 or $700 a person. Well, I mean, I, I've been able to manage both from Tama to Purge. So, and that's how we're doing it though. We took it to the Purge. Y'all had it from Tama, what, last year, so. Once you have that cert, you can submit it into a Catus, and you can challenge the fire commission. Yalden does written commission tasks, Wayma's getting ready to have one into this month for written and hands-on. Next closest hands-on, I don't know where it's the next closest. I know Putten guy has one over there. I have not found it yet. That would be the next closest. And yeah, it's all paperwork, but if you got that basic live, and you can go challenge firefighter one, we'll go to the bar, and you go to the gym with your dad.
I want to say just a couple of things. So this program that the state made, you know, they offer this free money, you know. It's like John was saying, it, it helps to give the firefighters some money, but what the state's ultimate goal was, was to provide the training. They give that firefighter the incentive to train. You know, I've been fighting fires since 1998, and firefighting in 1998.
You know, I've been fighting fires since nineteen ninety-eight, and firefighting in nineteen ninety-eight versus twenty twenty-four is completely different. So, you know, there's different materials, there's different tactics, there's different everything. Um, and knowing that the state's offering you this money for free, as long as you take these courses, is to have a safe fire. You know, to limit liability, to limit, uh, workers comp, you know, because they're learning things the way that. Will be backed up by the, you know, state fire office, so, uh, and, you know, different tactics of new building, you know, building construction versus. Thirty years ago is different than building construction now, you know, and, and these classes yearly teach you, you know, this building construction, teach you. How to go on, you know, uh, being a critical care paramedic, y-you know, things this year versus five years from now are gonna be completely different. You know, and if I don't stay up on my education, in five years from now, I may harm this patient, you know, and the fire service is the same way. You know, you could go into a, you know, burnt building and not come out, you know, without the proper training. You know, so it's just, it's another thing that, in my opinion, that would be good for the county to look at and say. We'd like for our department to do this because it's gonna keep our people safe, and from a liability standpoint on the city or on the county. It's gonna help, you know, potential lawsuits, potential worker comp payout, and things like that, just for, you know, in the firefighter to get that free training, free money in their pocket, so. To me, you know, it's a win-win situation all the way around.
Go ahead and tell me what I talked today.
Uh, oh, yeah, so this month, we do, we do monthly classes, it's, they're usually four-hour blocks. And that will, you know, more than meet our hours at Wilson County, and this, uh, this month's training was, um, electric vehicles. You know, firefighting, there is no firefighting for electric vehicles, you know, but we train on it, but you're not gonna put it out, you know, but that's something new, and something. Well, and when you start doing extrication, you know, where do you cut on, on an electric vehicle, you cut the wrong place, you're dead, you know, that's just how it is. So you have to have that training, so that's just to incentivize you to get these fire training, so. Anyways, I just wanted to put that part.
I appreciate you guys coming. Um, well, guys, unfortunately. This is all we're able to touch on here right now. Um, because we don't have our people here, so. Thank you all for coming, I appreciate it, and, um, I'll get with, uh, with Amy and you guys and see whenever we can meet again, and, uh, hopefully have a forum. And discuss things.
Like a folks do a jury.
We can't do that.
Oh, we tried, we already.